Welcome everybody to tunnel number seventeen two. It's October thirty first, twenty twenty three and today we are joined by Felix, Kendrick, Tavo, Walter, Judith, Rojo, Kiyamo, Fly, another Felix and Reed AI. Thanks all for joining in today. Um yeah, as you can see on the screen share, um it's a bit of an outline for the agenda, starting off with a couple of mentions. And then moving over to the work groups update and then a little bit about the voting experiment. And if time permits, I want to brainstorm a little bit on how we as an ambassador program can support the awarded teams of deep funding. And then if time permits, there's room for open topics as well. Um a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is, we're um a bunch of people that um are aligned with the mission and vision of the singularity net ecosystem. And we want to contribute and then provide frameworks for other people to to join in, helping out, spreading that mission. And we do this in self organizing work groups and there's a whole wide variety of of different topics um in which you can help out and meet some cool people. So if you're interested in joining, do hop onto our Discord server and get to the getting started channel to get started. Uh then a couple of uh mentions to start off. Uh first of all, as you've noticed, um the time slots uh for the tunnel itself uh changed to nineteen UTC due to um above winter time and also an overlapping um other um uh community call happening uh right before this on the eighteen UTC slot, the Jimbalabs playground. And every now and then it's just, yeah, people want to be in both. So we figured let's go for nineteen UTC. Uh then another nineteen UTC call out, but for coming Thursday would be the deep funding town hall. And Walter, you have a question?
On schedule, I think currently the Discord events has two entries for the uh deep funding town hall, the new one, and I think Fly you have created the the previous one, just letting you know.
I think that's also an artifact of the uh summertime, winter time change. Um on calendar, it looks okay. So I think Discord will pick it up. Uh that that bot might take a while to to pick it up. Uh but if not, yeah, simply remove the the wrong entry there. Uh and then an uh update on the quarter three budget review and quarter four planning of the budgets. It's not completely finalized. We're we're this close. Um I would say in in ways we are, uh we have finalized it. However, we also bump it to some issues um for October. And yeah, broadly speaking, well, I think Tava will touch on the Treasury Guild um in a bit during the work groups update, uh but this um the coming Treasury Guild session session on Thursday uh will hopefully solve everything. So that's gonna be nice. No pressure. I think that's it for the mentions. So any other things we should call out uh before moving over to the work group updates?
Network State was off some conferences yesterday.
Ah, maybe we can put a live stream somewhere. Cause I did see it. It's it's fully available, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, it was great. Pretty.
I can't grab it. Oh, I see. Okay, maybe it will pop up in chat, but I'll also comment it on the uh on this video once it's live.
And for this week as well, a Cadda Summit is taking place this week, next week. So we might expect a bunch of folks here being busy moving to Summit as well. As we have some crossover in our communities at Singularity and Cadda. And yeah. Have an awesome time, everybody who is intending main summit or one of the satellite site uh summits around the world.
Yeah, definitely. We can link that as well. Sounds great. There's also the AI Safety Summit um taking place over the next couple of days. There was like a pre-event today. Yeah, it's a lot going on these days. Very cool.
Nice. Um yeah, that kind of relates to um something that might get touched on during incubation, I think. Uh so maybe we could move to the work group updates. It's not by accident, because incubation is first on the list there. Um so Fly, can I ask you for a little update?
Yeah, sure. Uh incubation last week was great. We were talking um discussing uh the just get a link for anyone who wants to take a look. Um these are the notes from last meeting. Um they're published publicly now, so um I'll now publish this week's uh incubation. If you want to add any topics, um you're welcome to do it through this or the form. Um but yeah, it was great. We were going last week uh through how we developed the incubation guild as a experimental R and D for the ambassador program. Um it was, yeah, a a lot of things, a lot of things that we covered. Uh I'm really not gonna do it justice, but we're gonna do more again today. Uh just posting the current um today's agenda in the chat, uh which will be covering like defining the incubation guild, uh going over an introduction to D work, uh looking over with the research projects, which um will do an incubation and look at how we uh yeah, go ahead, grow, distribute further. Looking forward to it. Catch you there.
So thank you very much. Um and I I do want to touch on this topic we we uh mentioned um a bit before in preparation on um potentially making a not just like an ecosystem or or ambassador uh calendar, but a bit broader, uh like also ecosystem and and beyond like events. Um not sure if this week's uh session would have room for that.
Yeah, so this will be one of the research projects. We're trying to um there's always so much to do, so we're trying to come from doing work in meetings to like formalizing a process of actually giving people uh accountability, responsibility for a little research project to kind of inform different parts of the ambassador program. So yeah, man, that's it's it's a great idea to add to the list. So if you want to do research projects like that, um then you should jet definitely come to incubation.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Um then next on the list, um I don't think we have a representative right now from archival work group. And they will have their biweekly um session tomorrow at thirteen UTC. And something that did pop up earlier today was that there's some uh unclarity about the process for a work group leads to uh make pull requests on their or maybe they should use merge, but on on the GitHub side of things of submitting archival uh contributions was a bit unclear. I hope to solve that during that session. And for the latest summary, you can always check the meeting summary channel. That brings us to uh the the work PBL work group. Tava, how are we doing there?
Yeah, we had pretty amazing session last time. Uh again, a lot of like review and edited content we went through. Um and we started that ideating on the actual items for T work lessons. So basically now we are going to do a slight structure changes to the under mere website to make it more flow with when a student joins the course like and it will be like logical step by step. And the end result of the course will be that they create themselves private for learning with T work, using T work, making actions there. Um so yeah, next week, T work in the work group itself, we are going to play that process. We read, okay, create the tasks, recreate the task, and if there are any complications, we will update the lessons itself. That will be it for T work PBL. We're getting closer, but I would say next month is is stuff ready.
Um and then if you if you don't mind, a a quick check, I see on the calendar it's at um I think it also shifted with the time change. Um it's now at fourteen UTC. Should I put it at thirteen like it used to be?
Uh yeah. I can move that. That's correct.
I just that. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Um nice. That then brings us to strategy work group and quick check if head elf is in the room. I think he was not able to make it, but sometimes no, it's not. Um basically a quick update there would be, um we discussed the document on on defining the round table and and so far, uh that has been a bit um the document is kept a bit internal to the work group. Um but head elf will should post it later today um for more wider engagement uh within the ambassador program wide. And during tomorrow's session, we'll continue work on that. And basically, it's uh the plan is still to have the um this document was also referred to as the roles levels document uh in an earlier iteration. And uh the aim is still to have that finalized by um the beginning of December. So there's about four sessions remaining, which uh will also go for increasing um yeah, involvement of um of the wider ambassador group. Then next one would be the Treasury Guild.
Here we can share where where we are with the budgets. So we had all synchronously, we shared each other the budget document where we had our default values that were derivated from yeah, the the our contribution themselves. And then some who is in work groups also added their like what they expect to get or what they think their costs will be. Then we summed up all of that information and if the budget went like the total budget went over budget, then we equally took the same amount of percent from each of the uh work groups so that they would fit into the ambassador budget. And now we kind of have something to look at and we have a limit which we could accept. Um and that could do this, as you recall, joining everybody. Um we also gonna have like a a bit of attention there because this week, I can when to today's morning with the transactions, based on that quarter budget, there is already half of the work groups and pools over the budget. So we should also a bit of discuss how do we, what is our proceedings when we go over budget? And what do we take it from next month or reserve or what are the implications of that? And yeah, maybe we have to do like a longer than one hour session. So be prepared if decisions is made to increase the time so we can discuss more and then do a vote at the end of the session.
Yeah, looking forward to that. Uh it seems one of the unclarities that uh was brought up earlier today was like we discussed everything in light of a quarterly budget and now we're enforcing things on a monthly uh budget. So I think that that would need a little bit of hashing out, let's say.
Yeah.
Uh let's see, that's also on the calendar for sixteen thirty. UTC on the slides. It's like half of the meetings they changed with the times, not all of them, just half of them. It's uh really convenient.
Uh uh I think in general, we can say the next two weeks are hell because stupid global world, we are living in twenty first century, stupid countries, one country changed, time zone on this day, another one a week later. So be be prepared for one, two weeks chaos. So yeah.
And I'm changing all of my clocks to UTC this daylight savings. I'm over with it. Completely over with it.
Nice.
How many years of pain you took?
I feel the the simplest approach to it is um take the Google Calendar as leading, like if it's there, that's the slot when it happens. Um I guess every work group has to do a double check on uh seeing if it's accurate. I I do think yeah, well, we have to double check. Um but yeah, using the calendar as a main source of truth makes a lot of sense. Uh yeah, well, so a reminder about that calendar, do add it to your uh your own Google Calendar so you uh are always up to date with the latest. Uh the next on the list is uh the onboarding work group and um sugar couldn't make it. Not sure if anybody else from currently present people was there.
Uh Peter, I believe uh Sugar asked you to um to make a summary in the last meeting we had in the chat.
I'm aware. Just checking if there's uh somebody uh who was present there. Um also, there was a a very nice uh summary. Um I think it was put by Lady Tempest. I believe, oh. No, it was love, actually. Yeah. Um yeah, basically it was decided for the onboarding group that's um for the, we introduced the attack for being part of the work group. And um to to receive the tag on Discord, um we would require um attendings of um either uh three meetings in a month or five meetings in a quarter. Um that role itself doesn't bring any uh rewards, but it does allow you to pick up tasks in uh in D word. And uh there's still an outstanding task on um we had an onboarding session in September. I think there's still a video task related to that which is pending. Um let's see what else. Oh yeah, Vanessa would reach out to Rojo to, well, to interface on that and and also to get uh clarity on um what requirements um video work group has when a work group um requests a video. I'm not sure if that's uh proceeded already.
Uh we did, we did get like a request to make a video. The only problem is that uh the auditing of the of the video, so we already have the video made, but the auditing, in my opinion, should be done by the requesting body. Uh but I think there is a confusion in there uh that hopefully we will solve this week so that we can get the the project approved or disapproved or yeah.
Okay, cool. Um but that that's just on the video. Is there also, did you speak about like um broader requirements for like, you know, next time uh any work group basically uh requests um video? Um yeah, basically to have a bit of an outline, what's uh what kind of instructions you're looking for?
Um yeah, uh I guess there could be a document for that. Uh but I mean, we're humans, right? Like reach out in a in a channel. I would like to make a video and then we talk about it in the channel and that's it. Whether it's me, whether it's someone else from video work group. I don't know, but yeah, we'll see.
Okay, cool. All right. Um next on the list would be incubation AI sandbox. Fly, the floor is yours.
Uh yeah, last week was great. We went, um Curtis was taking us through um a platform he's been uh developing uh to kind of educate and enable people to utilize AI and L L Ms and quite uh it's quite comprehensive resource. Um so they were going through that and talking about how um AI Sandbox can pool resources uh with Curtis' project that he's already been working on. Um with the context that AI Sandbox is getting messy. It needs some kind of uh organization of the resource. And what's better than like creating a little, a little, another little corner um to aggregate and collaborate with uh with other initiatives around. So yeah, it was great him uh taking us through that. And um uh yeah, planning planning future collaboration development. That was, yeah, that was about it really.
Nice. Thank you. Uh so this week doesn't have it undone next week. Um
Yeah.
Eighteen UTC is actually correct. Nice. That one is uh correct in the calendar. Cool. Um then next would be the video work group and I managed to skip the putting the monthly um review on the slide, uh but Rojo, please go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. Hopefully, uh can I, ah yeah, can I share my screen? You uh they changed the this thing. Uh how do you share screen? Uh okay, no. Okay, I'm I'm confused. I think they changed the design of this thing. So give me, oh, okay, screen thing, alright. Can you see my screen?
Yes, now we can.
Alright, so welcome everyone. Uh in case you're not familiar with the process, so uh you know, every week we give an update, but for video work group, every month we try to make a summary of basically what happened last month and get some updates and and stuff like that. And this is the monthly update of uh October. The first thing we start with is a social media in numbers. So we kind of get some stats about what happened with our social media. In on the YouTube side, it was quite green. Uh subscribers, you know, exceeded one hundred, uh which is a a nice thing on our way to one thousand and then ten thousand after that. Uh the views had a sharp increase of twenty six percent, which is largely due to the two shorts. Uh but we still uh we're still waiting for that outbreak in on in YouTube as well. Uh I I do believe that it will work with some shorter video, whether it's short or like a short, long video, if that makes sense. But yeah, we're kind of uh trying to get something going on 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 that side. We did have an increase of number of impressions, which is very nice. Uh and as you can see, the number of impressions increased double the rate of the views, which means we have slightly more engagement from the community that or from people watching our videos, which is pretty cool. On the YouTube side, we saw a very good growth last month, sixty percent increase in the follower side, eight hundred four percent on the view side. Um and forty nine percent uh on on the impression side again. Um so that was great. Uh TikTok has been slow. Uh so again, like uh number of followers is laughable. Not not very impressive, I would say at this point. Uh but it's still green. Impressions are increasing much more compared to all the other metrics, but yeah, um we're still waiting for again another, let's say viral moment or whatever on that front. Um yeah. Uh Twitter or X, uh followers not very great. Still green, but not very great. I mean, seven percent increase on that front. Uh the views have been doing good. Uh when I when I refer to views here, I refer to the video shared by the video work group, mainly summaries and stuff like that. And the impressions again uh going up, uh which is pretty good. Overall, the metrics on X uh are going good besides the followers. So perhaps we should engage more community members to just share the message around and try to follow us if you're not. Uh that would be great. Um again, this is the data that I referred to earlier uh on the four social media. So we did improve our dashboard, not just colors, but also the I mean, we made it easier for for anyone to edit it in the future. Um and we are, um well, I'm gonna talk about that later, but this is how it looks. You can join it with the link that uh from the link that I'm gonna share after this, uh where we have basically all the documents and the stuff that we're using. Uh last month, we proved, we produced sixteen videos, which is quite high compared to last month. Uh I I believe it's three times maybe or something like that. I I forgot the number from last month, but uh so that was good. Uh mainly due to uh five new people joining the work group and two uh new applicants that are currently going through the application process. Uh we did close the application process a week ago uh to make sure we're not oversaturated, especially with the budget going over already. Uh so yeah, if we have more tasks, then perhaps we can open the process again, as long as all the members agree to that uh or majority of members agree to that. Um yeah, what's next? Uh for next month, we're basically planning to increase engagement with uh our social media from the community and trying to share the message uh even outside of the community uh to basically drive eyeballs into what we're producing as a work group and as a as a whole ambassador program. Uh further collaborate with guilds and work groups. We did that already. We're working with writers work group. We're working with uh onboarding work group as well. Uh hopefully, education work group as well. And yeah, we look forward for uh more collaborations. We do have a goal of automating the social media tracking dashboard. And hopefully that will be taken by uh the new newly done developers work group. We still have to kind of establish that work group for it to take this task, but uh I personally think that it would be a nice kind of starting task for a new work group. Um shouldn't be that hard to do, but we'll see. Uh last point, produce more information, uh informational and educational videos. And that would be probably in collaboration with educational guild. There is some talks about that, but nothing set yet, so no promises. Uh that's about it. Keep up the good work. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to each and every person from the video work group and even outside who contributed to to all of this that I consider personally a success so far. And yeah, thank you.
Good stuff. Thanks for the elaborate reporting. That's uh yeah. Always nice. Lots of green. Uh let me grab the screen share. Um there we are. Cool. Um yeah, the next on the list is um the writers work group. And I think we have Canichi in the house. Yes, we do. Canichi, all yours.
Um yeah, uh hello everyone. Uh so uh we actually didn't have a meeting last week. Uh something came up and obviously uh circumstance on my part. Um but uh we made up for it uh because basically I was gonna show to give just give clarity on the task I was gonna be adding during uh the day after or so. And uh yeah, I added them and uh putting out uh regrets about uh two, two, because it's like a week and a couple of days, uh what a draft ready to go. So basically we have a articles uh coming in the back all the way to like about like the night or the tenth of whatever. So yeah, and um we hit our back for this month, which is uh we try to send articles uh this month and send articles, uh, this month. And, uh, yeah, we've done that. So 10 articles right after October, which, uh, hits our last one by September, which was, uh, seven articles. And, uh, looking to keep up that pace, uh, with, uh, November and December. So basically, yeah, uh, I said, oh, like, uh, two weeks ago, last call we actually had, and, uh, yeah, we're just gonna be progressing along, uh, of, uh, things that are coming up this November. So it's gonna be a lot, uh, yeah. So I've been working on the Zini, which will be announcing on Twitter tomorrow. Uh, the sprints officially, I know stuff tomorrow, but the first announcement should go out tomorrow. And, uh, which include the infrastructure, so everything needed to participate in the sprint. And, uh, also maybe showcase a few examples if we can. So people know what to expect. And the pretty simple stuff, uh, we're trying to make it more engaging instead of your regular, uh, straightforward Zini quests. So it's gonna be more interactive and fun. So yeah, I guess, uh, look forward to that. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it. Uh, looking forward to the meeting this week. So catch up on stuff and ideas for them. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you very much. Um, I guess a double check is in place for the timings here as well. Um, I think the calendar is a mess, it looks like. Um, for this week, they are on video on 13 writers and 14, so that's accurate. But then for the week after and onwards, it still needs to be adjusted. Well, let me just go ahead and change it. And that also brings to mind, um, an additional session we, um, started, uh, last week. Um, basically called a session for the guilt formerly known as marketing guilt in, um, in view of, um, renaming it into outreach, um, guilds or, or work group. Um, let's see. Well, I guess, uh, sorry for putting you on the spot, um, but Judith, would you maybe be able to give a little, um, perfect timing, sorry there. Could you give a little of that there?
Um, yeah, we had a meeting last Friday to discuss some ideas, how we could improve our marketing and outreach efforts. And there's a few problems we discussed. One of them was, um, we noticed that not too many people are attending the town hall sessions and also not too many are watching the recordings. So one thing we said is that we need to increase our effort to promote all the initiatives and everything that's going on a lot more across all platforms at the same time. Right now, the video and writers work group works a little bit disconnected. So we wanna make an effort to collaborate more and also instead of focusing a lot of our efforts on, on, onboarding new members for, um, the ambassadors program. So instead of, yeah, instead of focusing a lot of effort onto onboarding new members, we wanna put more effort onto strengthening our internal ecosystem and collaborating, um, between work groups and just kind of tightening up our existing structures. Uh, another problem that we discussed was, um, the cross-cable collaboration between Singularity Net projects and the ambassadors program. So what we said is the other Singularity Net spin-off programs, they're, they are aware that the ambassador program exists, but they're not really aware of how much talent we have and what we actually do in detail and what we could offer. So we discussed a little bit about who we could create for, how could we offer our services and how much could we charge for it? So an idea that came up was to establish a coordinator team that could work between the Singularity Net spin-off pros, uh, projects and the ambassadors program. So the idea was rather than having basically the marketing guild work group for this, or rather than having a work group or ideation sessions for this, to have a dedicated team that would, it would be basically a role created. So it wouldn't be a guild, it would be a team that has the specific role created that would then focus on the outreach to the other, um, Snet programs to see what they're doing, what they need help with, and then to, to communicate how we can help them. Um, another thing we discussed was the improvement of the onboarding process. While we said we don't wanna overly focus on onboarding new members. Um, we, and we do already have some structures in place. We were thinking that it would make sense to kind of create a one-page or document um, that we could use to outreach to universities, or maybe like people that have never heard of us. So that we could have the structure in place to onboard completely new members and explain to them, um, what we do and, um, how they can get involved. Because the, the current structures we have in place, that's for people that are already interested, like the getting started channel, that's for people that are already interested in joining, but we were thinking it would make sense to create a document um, to also promote to people that maybe have never heard of us. And I think that was the main, yeah, the main things. There's still lots of discussing to do. So if you would like to join, I think we scheduled the next session for Friday 12 UTC, if I remember right. Um, yeah, please join us.
Thanks a lot for that. Uh, it's indeed, uh, 12 UTC on Friday. And, uh, sorry again for putting you on the spot, uh, like this. It's not even on the slide, but, uh, yeah, great, uh, great overview. Thank you.
Yeah, the document is in the, the work group update, like the meeting updates, if anyone wants some more details.
Oh, um, uh, looking at the clock, I should speed up a little bit. Um, let's see, there's, um, next on the list, the gamers guilds. Uh, they will have their, uh, third session, uh, coming Saturday. Quick check if we have a representative in the house. Don't think we do. Then, as you can see in the, uh, treasury channel on Discord, there was also a bit of unclarity about, um, the status of the gamers guild. Um, technically, they started off in a trial, um, phase, uh, as a, as a work group. And it got very clear that we don't have proper procedures in place for assessing the trial and, um, seeing their third session is coming up, um, this weekend, I would say after that makes sense to, to have an assessment and, and, well, figure out whether they, uh, should, uh, whether they can, can become an actual, uh, guild or work group, or well, if the trial perhaps isn't successful, that's a decision to be made there still. Uh, the discussion is in the treasury guilds, uh, channel currently. Then, uh, we are getting to the end of the list. Uh, next would be the knowledge-based work group. Uh, Taffa, could you guys, uh, give us a little update?
Yeah, so yesterday we met, uh, a few new people joined, so we shared a bit of what we're doing, what are the calls are with the knowledge weight group. And then in the session, we mainly work on two things, analyzing some items. This time we cut, uh, far further with this. We did one example together based on the questions crafted from the first session we had several weeks ago. And then we had like a single, like everybody analyzed their own item and then we went through this. So we got six items through that. Now this item, this activity is also open for asynchronous. So basically, if you are feeling that, oh, I want to, I don't know, analyze marketing good items or, uh, governance work group or something gives you interest, you can open up the tasks or the items and, uh, give these analyzed questions like he's, why, what is this resource about? And, uh, if there is a newer version of that document that we shared. And should it be included in the kit book? And then next into, in next meeting, we, we, in two weeks, uh, we will then go over more of these items together rather than doing the analyzing at that point and and yeah, in the, also in the call incubation, good items have been added. So more resources are coming every week on that, uh, motherboard.
Thanks very much. Cool. Uh, and then for the first time ever, the developer work group. Roho, that's good.
Uh, if Guillermo is still with us, uh, I would rather, uh, have him make a summary to get a different voice. Uh, Guillermo, I'm sorry. I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you would like.
No worries, Roho. Um, well, first thing first, thank you for, uh, the opportunity of being part of, uh, the team, um. What we have yesterday, what we have been named our first brainstorming, uh, Roho have a five to 10 minutes to give me the, the update on the, his vision for the group and, uh, to work towards, uh, the ambassador needs. So how can we help to, to strengthen, uh, the results? And, um, I think it was it's really cool. It was for first, uh, catch up with idea. I think, uh, we, uh, we will be a team of four or five developers with a very, uh, but, uh, will be a variety of skills, uh, um, that we'll put together. Um, and we, well, we are still in ideation phase and trying, trying to stand how to, to work together and prepare ourselves to, to serve and be useful for the community. Um, Roho mentioned something that we all know, uh, we need more developers, uh, to help, uh, bring better results. And, uh, that was the first brainstorming. We, we worked to schedule a meeting where we have all the team members. And that will be the next step. I don't know, um, uh, Roho, we have a chance to, to schedule with the other, um, participants and, uh, we'll have more news for the next meeting.
Uh, on that front.
Yeah, you wanna add something?
Yeah, just on the, on that front. I mean, next meeting, for sure. Uh, I'm actively trying to get like this common, you know, like a slot where everyone is available. Uh, it is hard, as you might expect, uh, even though it's just five people, but it's really hard. Uh, but yeah, uh, I would say next week, same time, uh, as specified here, work so far for uh, three people. One person said maybe, another person didn't answer yet. So I, I would hope next week, same time, Monday, we would have a meeting with all members, hopefully.
Nice. I added that, um, into the calendar as a placeholder for now. Uh, Botry, if you hand up.
I'd like to second the, uh, enthusiasm, uh, of Roho in, uh, getting the developer, uh, work group established as a, you know, basically both industry and open source developer of many decades. I think it's a great thing. Uh, my specific thing would be not only kind of nurturing developers within the organization, but in vain, you know, in line was the ambassador outreach initiatives. Uh, I'd like to find ways to contact of the open source community, the AI community, the crypto community, which curious as it may be, tend to hang together and, uh, so they may require separate whatever. And there may also be an alignment. I offered the, uh, the deep funding folks to assist with seeing through technical due diligence on the submissions or accepted proposals, particularly there. You know, which kind of open source licenses they're gonna ask for, you know, the quality of documentation and build processes and na, na, na. So you can see how there is definitely an alignment between, uh, what Roho envisions and what I'd like to put in place for, you know, people in my profession.
That's great. Yep. Yeah, perfect. Um, looking at the clock, um, I'll do a quick update on, uh, education work group. And then we do have another topic, uh, to touch on. Uh, basically on education, um, we're working on videos for internal, uh, education right now. And you can see the latest in the education work group channel. Uh, so if you have any feedback on them, uh, yeah, do chime in, uh, on the conversation in that channel. And I think Felix, should still be enough time, right? Within the slot.
Oh, always. Nice. Then I throw a link, uh, to a document in the live chat here. To some updates actually from governance worker who in the last month went a little bit through some innovative ideas and think, how can we make some fancy decision-making processes actually for the ambassadors program? And setting up to very often consent consensus-driven decision-making processes, which we already have in place. Most important thing, everybody may know, the whole ambassador's program self-organizes itself through mostly task-based processes. Which means that the guilds and the work groups spin up a shadow of stuff, what I have to do, want to do, have done. And capture these in tasks, which usually happens mostly on Dwork and I can't remember working using GitHub as well, but doesn't matter actually in this regard. I don't need to screenshot. I just ramble it down. Um, the beautiful thing is that we record and track all these contributions of completed tasks by our contributors, which are you. Exactly. Everything what we have on contributor test is a Discord handle and the world that is. And over the time, we built a quite nice library of verified contributions in the ambassador's program. Where we have this awesomely fancy treasury system, which transforms all your engagements into unchain readable data. Meaning we throw all this stuff on the blockchain and it's there for fucking ever as long as the code is running. And this means we have a really nice track record of, let's say, verified contributors. From which we know, ah, okay, person X is constantly engaging, not only over some hours, but over fucking months. And we can track this on his contributions on symbol tokens, H I X tokens, whatever we sent out to recognize entry about engagements. And then we said, hey, it's actually something really cool. Because we don't have to do, some of you might be aware, there's this KYC shitty problem, usually when it comes to unchain governance. Let's say, what decision-making, KYC means know your fucking customer. Already we are not customers, but know your community, we can say in this regard, which usually applies people to go through a verification process. Where you need to submit stuff like email address and mobile and passport and whatnot. One problem with this is, uh, it's kind of really breaks down the whole privacy, anonymity parts. Because ideally, we don't want to reveal anybody's full identity, not more as they want to. Therefore, once again, we stick to Discord and your wallet address. And now have a own KYC process in place actually, where we are able to verify valid contributions as individuals over timeframe of multiple months. Meaning we have some awesome stuff here. When you look on, on chain decision-making processes, there's very often this desire of one person, one vote. Because usually voting votes are usually made by plutocratic voting, which means the amount of your assets is your voting power. It tries to avoid a little bit this problem of, now of fancy terms, civil attacks, but it's all about governance. So I throw a bunch of weird terms around because that way we get a little bit familiar with it. Which means that very often, you as one person can generate Which means that very often, you as one person can generate as many wallets as you want, right? And how can we verify that one person, one vote is actually not one wallet, one vote? And 300 wallets are one person, so fuck, this shit doesn't actually works. So what we did, we defined some soft parameters, soft parameters in this regard, because they can be easily changed, adapted, adjusted, and said, what happens if we take all the contributors from the ambassadors program, which engaged more than five hours over the timeframe of the last six months? Which gave us a list of 51 contributors. And then we said, oh, cool, now we have 51 individual contributors, what happens now if we meant 51 specific tokens? So we mentioned 51 SNA tokens, which you can also find in the uh ambassadors treasury, as a lock policy ID, meaning they can't be voted more, there's only this 51. What we will do next is we will send pretty much everybody who's in the call here is on the list as well of this 51 people, we send each and every single one, one token. This one token will, if you have the possibility, to actually cast the vote on a specific platform, that we use Vol10, which is a voting platform on the Kalama blockchain. And you will be able to only participate in the vote if you have one of these fancy tokens. To the vote itself, we won't make any important decision, it's a test. Simply to see, ah, okay, how can we use the treasury system and the task-based and contribution-based system to actually implement this into quite interesting governance mechanisms in this regard? The vote topic of the vote might be something like, is the blue red, blue or yellow, or some stuff, you can vote whatever you want. The vote itself wouldn't have any relevance, the most important part is just a bootstrap the this whole process, and just to have a very first end-to-end yeah, pilot on how we can go in the ambassadors program with one person, one vote. But just, she, don't underestimate this, this is a hell of a tricky problem for a shitload of communities, so we are on a quite nice track to bootstrap this actually. And when the whole stuff will happen, most likely over the next days. We didn't send the tokens today, this morning, because we had our head bunch around uh around a bunch of other stuff. Will be announced, you will have a nice one-page as well guiding you through the whole process to the platform, how to look in there, connecting your wallet and how to cast your vote. And it's that's it, there's the document in the live chat where we outlined the whole thing from a very easy, high-level perspective. If you have any questions, comments, thoughts, concerns, ideas, whatnot, definitely go for it. Document is open to edit for everybody, please don't mess around on the documents, you can edit, but be kind to the document, and we have a change doc anyway, but yeah. And that's it, we rambled enough around this. Missed token distribution, no, Walter, the token distribution didn't happen yet on the on the voting token, this still needs to be done. The token itself, fingerprint and policy ID, you can find on the document as well. And that's enough of rambling for now, I think. Stay tuned, please vote, will be a funny vote, maybe, also. And helping us in defining some cool stuff for the ambassadors program, government stuff, yes.
Amazing, thank you very much for that, bro.
This was more than five minutes even, Pete, you see, we are over time then.
We were one minute over the slot currently, I think we can still discuss a little bit and then uh look towards wrapping up for today.
I mean, Walter raises the sense on governance, this goes on for fucking ever.
Uh, I mean uh governance as, you know, the mechanism for decision-making, I think, is the big deal for open organization operations, so, you know, I'm totally into getting this, you know, analyzed up and down and and fine tuned, so don't be surprised if I bug everybody over it, so let me uh ask, you know, your kind permission of the other 11 people present to hit you up with a survey of your preferences on privacy, on participation, uh also I'm gonna float one after, cause I mean, in order to learn, we wanna hear, uh wanna get inputs, cause in, and also, I'd like to personally offer in addition, I'm sure, of uh Felix and everybody else supporting you, I also like to offer anybody who needs support in getting the mechanics of uh voting tokens, crypto kind of stuff, uh just ping me and I'll uh hopefully can walk you through the process, provide any kind of uh support on that, uh cause that's one thing, people who are crypto-native tend to take it for granted years into the process, and it's not, and not at all a given that the general population overall will find it wide, so you know, with crypto adoption rates and, you know, few tenths of one percent across the general population, I mean, we need to find out if that's an impediment for this community.
I do agree, but also it's a crypto-native community almost, so I I think we will manage, but yeah, a great offer.
Uh, but we're reaching to the AI community and people who are less technical, so believe you me, we cannot take it for granted.
And also important mention on the voting test as well, it's really just a pilot. It won't be perfect, won't be really relevant or massively impactful. And there might be a bunch of experience what we will learn from this, and this is really the main outcome, to see, ah, okay, cool, what happens if and this is actually where we want to get to, having some first hands-on practice-based experience and start to iterate and ideate, but on real stuff actually, so that we don't lose ourselves in monsterless monsterless discussions about how things could be, and really build up very first and simple experiences. And on this regard, as well, much more outlining processes, which can be adapted by any guild or work group, or even other entities outside ambassadors program for purposes. So don't expect too much from it, it's a first pilot. Definitely not the best solution, whoever comes and say, but we showed quadratic voting, fuck, yeah, you're right, but let's set this for the for the next one, then let's improve step by step.
But your inputs and complaints and kudos and suggestions are very welcome. We almost insist that you let us know how it's hitting you personally.
Yes, agree on this.
Good stuff, well, great uh great initiative, looking forward. Uh, looking at the clock, I do think it's uh time to wrap up, I I did want to um have a bit of time for um a brainstorm, but yeah, that's just not gonna work in this uh, well, not today. Um, there's a proper overlap with uh Marketing Guild though, so perhaps um outside of just like the the internal spin-off projects, we could also consider deep funding awarded teams in the same context, um so yeah, I think either to be continued in that session or um next week in this town hall. Uh, quick check in the room if there's um, well, anything that should be added to today's uh session.
What's the topic of your brainstorming topic?
Uh, I wanted to um brainstorm on how we can um support the deep funding awarded teams with well, as an ambassador program with services in the broader sense.
But it's rough to discuss it, that's rough, a little bit of overtime.
Uh, yeah, but then we run also run into incubation uh slot.
Um, there's like 10 minutes left until incubation, um.
I don't think that's the right timing for now, to be honest.
Yeah.
I mean, I I would be happy to uh start um just chat about it, uh but then it it would end up in the Marketing Guild, I feel, um.
Uh, I'd like to second that, uh I think not only can we help our friendly, you know, fellow ambassador colleagues with their proposal, but just, I think it's also a vehicle for us to pull together as small teams and so on.
But it makes sense to discuss it in a marketing guild, actually, since we're just figuring out how we can offer our services and help them, right, it's basically the same thing, so why not? Do it there.
Yeah, I think it uh it fits well, absolutely, um. Something to note there is that uh coming Thursday, there's the um welcoming session for around three awarded teams. And I was kind of thinking to um, well, maybe I'll start ideating on it in the, I don't know, in tax-based, um just to give them a little um teaser, let's say. Right, go for it.
Yeah, um just to have a little shameless plug on incubation to to let you guys know that um if there are guilds or work groups or things that you're doing, that you think can require research, that research can help with these things, and this is something that I hope that incubation, this kind of research part can can fulfill. Where you have a question, but you don't have time to kind of really do the research, and this, for instance, could be a a topic, and in the in the creation of things, I hope that I hope that incubation can be something that can uh enable you guys when you have these kinds of ideas. Yeah.
Awesome, then I think it's a wrap for now, and hope to see you in incubation. Thanks a lot for being here, and stay awesome, and see you on the next one.